This conference will now be recorded.
I would like to call the December 16th, DeSoto City Council meeting to order. Start with roll call, please.
Lane.
Here.
Daniels.
Here.
Otto Michael.
Here.
Ritter.
Here.
Here.
Here's all of present.
Okay. I would invite you all to please rise and join me in the fudge.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, my nation and God. And that this whole liberty and justice are all.
Our first item tonight is a public hearing to consider a budget amendment for the water fund. Any introduction to this, Mike?
I can certainly do that now or hold off until the action item. It's up to you, Mayor.
All right, well, I will, I'll, I have to open the public hearing, so. I don't think anybody wants to speak, but.
Oh, I do.
Okay. No, on the, on the water.
On the water issue? Oh, no, no.
Yeah. Just do a little introduction.
Oh, certainly, yeah.
For the viewing audience, so.
Yes, so council, the public hearing item is to adjust the budgeted expenditures for 2021 in the water fund. State statute allows us to do this for various reasons, but primarily, really, the only reason you ever do it is if you're going to exceed the budget authority that you specified originally when we held the public hearings for the 2021 budget, which was in August of 2020. Like last year, we need, we did increase the budget for the water fund last year, similar reasons. More water was produced, we had a number of, the number of connections exceeded our projections. And then we also had some unexpected expenditures, most notably the lime removal project that we thought was going to happen in 2020 actually got delayed until the end of that year. And most of the expense for that project came out of the this year's, this year's budget rather than last year's. Another reason is over the summer months, we had issues with well production. And so that meant there were several wells down for maintenance over the peak summer months. And so we had to run the plant longer than normally we would. So personnel costs are up. And then lastly, we had some inflationary pressures on commodities, chemicals and other commodities like that, that have a succeeding the budget authority by about $200,000. So we've asked for an increase in the annual budget allocation for that fund. From a five-year projection standpoint, when we put the budget together in, in 2020, we were expecting year-end fund balance at the end of 21 of 1.09 million. Now projecting that to be 1.16 million. So essentially, it's, it's, it's not, not a significant impact on a five-year projection basis and won't significantly, if at all, impact future rate structure. So recommending that the council approve the budget amendment, but that won't take place until the action agenda.
So with that background, I will now officially open the public hearing on the budget amendment for the water fund. Anyone wish to speak regarding the budget amendment? Seeing no one come forward, I'll close the public hearing and we'll move on. Our next item is our consent agenda. We have approval of our minutes from our council meeting of December 2nd, approval of pay ordinance number 916, and approval of the 2022 cereal malt beverage licenses. Any additions or anything anyone would like to discuss? Or a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion, we approve the consent agenda.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor. I think Councilman Ritter wants to recuse himself from, from this.
Oh, sorry.
Sorry, it's the next item, my apologies.
No problem. I thought you were going to note that maybe one of the cereal malt licenses had been pulled from what was in the, our original packet transmittal, but.
No, sorry about that.
That's all, all, all lines, okay. We have a motion.
I will second that.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion of the motion? Hearing non-roll call, please.
Daniels.
Yes.
Otto Michael.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Murda.
Yes.
Wayne.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. So now we will consider pay ordinance number 916B.
I will recuse myself and stop my video.
Okay. So I guess for the record, the clerk will note that Councilman Ritter has temporarily left the meeting.
I'll make a motion, we approve pay ordinance 916B.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Otto Michael.
Yes.
Murda.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Now, can you, what are you, texting or?
Am I, am I back too early?
No, you're good.
All right.
All right. Our next item is called a public, members of the public are welcome to use this time to comment about any matter relating to city business, not listed tonight's agenda. The comments discussed under called a public may or may not be acted on by the council during this meeting, their four minutes, I'm one. Rose, would you like to address the council tonight? Please come to the podium.
Do I need to say my name?
Yes, please.
Rose Terbliger, 9160 Cedar Creek Road. Okay, yeah, and I, I handed a page, you guys go out. I just wanted to kind of do a year-end summary of discovering DeSoto and where we're at with that. Because we came together back in the spring of 2017. And on the upper portion, it talks about some of our initial goals of investing communication, promoting the city and various things there. And so I looked at that and realized that's exactly what we're doing. But in addition to that, there's a few additional things with. In the holiday issue of 2020, now your city pages are done both designed and written internally through Whitney Lanning. And so there was a price adjustment with that. And, and actually, I just want to just say that she's been a great person for city to have on board as far as promoting the city and all that she's done internally here. And so we work together when I do my issues with the city pages and various things like that. And also, as you know, I'm a DeSoto resident now for over 20 years and time has flown. And so I do have a personal investment in what I do with the magazine, which, you know, you go above and beyond sometimes just with advertisers content and various aspects. It's because I live here and all that sort of thing, so. But, and on the bottom are some additional things that has transpired since originally beginning in 2017. And, you know, people, I have some retailers outside of DeSoto that have magazines and, you know, and advertisers have commented that people come in tomorrow. And, and so the magazine does bring people and, you know, business into DeSoto, which I think has a small portion of that sales tax for you guys, so. And that, and then in addition, you know, I have large manufacturers and, you know, the small businesses, nonprofit organizations, so there's a big variety. And I have incorporated our key manufacturers that are listed here throughout the years. And just a little preview, Martin Marietta, your quarry will be featured in the upcoming issue of, in February, made a frog. And then I also was able to have opportunities for youth that are listed here, B R H. And I had a DeSoto high school intern last year. And she actually went on to Mizzou and is a journalism major. And she wrote the article about the new district facility at my, and 83rd Street, or on 83rd, yeah, by my throat. And, and so it really gave her a great opportunity to go to that college with a portfolio already. And she was a great intern, too. And there's a couple of other things I feature with the school district. And probably the biggest, most recent thing is, you may have noticed that the magazine is weighs a little bit more and is bigger than what it used to be. And in the fall, I, I began with a new printer out of Lawrence who does magazines. And they were able to give me, they specialize in magazines, and so I got, they were able to offer better pricing and allow me to go from 32 pages higher because I could use their permit because I had a limit of 3.3 ounces before then. And I was really happy with our other printer, but they just had so much more that they offered services and various things. And so printing costs actually went down, but shipping or distribution went higher because it weighs more. But it all evened out the same. And so in our economy of incredible inflation and prices rising, I've been able to stay consistent with the city's portion that they contribute to this for distribution and printing. And, and as far as my salary and staffing salaries, just to clarify that comes from my advertisers in the issue. And that is something that has increased over the years because we have higher distribution and more work on my end and more staffing. And so, so anyway, I just wanted to give a little more update to where the magazine is at now and just kind of give a year-end summary there, so.
Okay, thank you, Rose. Anybody have any questions for Rose? Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good work.
Good work, Rose.
We like the magazine. All right, item three is old business, we have none, so we'll go to item four A, discuss park board recommendations for future parks referendum.
All right, I'm taking this one. Good evening, for the record, Brandon Mills, city clerk, assistant to the city administrator. I have with me Jay, our Parks and Recreations Director, Josh, the chair of the Parks Advisory Board, and Bill, the, the board president of the, the vice chair, excuse me, vice chair of the board here with me to kind of help me through this presentation. So over the last several months, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has been working on developing a new proposal to enhance recreation activities in the city. There's the PowerPoints down.
Yeah, you want to go to the PowerPoint?
The advisory board has been working on developing a new proposal to enhance the recreation activities in the city. With the advisement of city staff, the board spent the summer and fall reviewing proposals for bond referendum. This presentation will serve as an overview of the proposal and the beginning of the, of the discussion between the Parks and Recreation Board and the council about a potential bond referendum in 2020. Next slide. As you may recall, the 2018 Parks and Recreation Master Plan created a roadmap for improvements for recreation activities in the community. It included improvements at Miller and Riverfest Park, the sports fields and enhancements to the aquatic center, and an extension of existing trails throughout the community. In March of 2020, the voters of DeSoto were presented with a bond referendum for a select number of park improvements, including purchasing land for additional sports fields, the extension of trails throughout the cities, and various, various improvements at existing city parks. The projects are broken into three categories or types, parks improvements, trails and the sports field. It totaled, its total was roughly 3.25 million, and the split for each category is on the slide above. Some projects in the bond referendum include replacement of playgrounds at Miller Park, the River Park Shelter House, Nine Home Golf Course at Riverfest Park, and the purchasing of land at Riverfest Park for sports fields, including restrooms, parking and water at the fields. Next slide. Unfortunately, the bond referendum failed, the final vote tally is shown on the slide, it failed by a slim margin of roughly 42 votes. Next slide. The parks, following the bond referendum, staff put together a citizen survey to receive feedback on the referendum. Staff prepared a report, and while I won't dive into specifics, here are some significant findings. One, the total amount of bond was too high and therefore the public opposed the tax increase. Two, poor timing, unfortunately, you may recall, the bond referendum started at the beginning of the pandemic. And as a result, there was significant economic uncertainty, therefore a tendency to decline any increases in taxes. The report prepared by staff includes several recommendations, including increasing public outreach on the topics and fewer projects with a smaller price tag. Next slide. Since the spring of 2020, a few projects, the bond referendum have been completed, confusing other sources and have been included in the capital projects budget to be completed in the near future. Most significant was the purchase of land for the sports fields. Other items, other items are being proposed in the upcoming CIP, including signage and improvement at Miller Riverfest Park and Riverfest Playground. Throughout 2021, the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board has discussed a bond referendum and outlined the priorities. The park board's official recommendation is to focus on trails. And now I'm going to turn this over to the chair of the park board, who can walk you through the decision-making process. And then I'll come back and we'll do the details of the trails.
Thanks, Brandon, Josh Champlin, Chair on the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board. And before Brandon gets to the detail, but I just wanted to do, like what he said, give a high-level view of how we came to this proposal today, our vision and process. As, as Brandon mentioned, that, you know, one of the things that in 2020 that the bond proposal didn't pass. And when we heard the analysis of the survey results, what we heard was the similar things, there was a lack of focus. The proposed bond had a lack of focus in it, so there was quite a broad array of projects and kind of like, kind of suffered from maybe a focused priority. The feeling that the bound amount was too high. And 70% of the survey, though, 70% of the survey respondents did indicate that they would use one of the four trails that were listed, probably on a weekly basis. So there was an overview in the survey results that did indicate that trails were still quite popular. And maybe that got lost in the whole mix of the rest of the bond referendum. So to that end, you know, we took it back to our advisory committee and wanted to focus solely on trails and recreational pathways in the city of DeSoto with a vision to connect as many of the existing parks that we have in town and also connecting as many neighborhoods to the parks in our local parks and recreational facilities. And then also in the Johnson County parks that we have, those one-four parks nearby us to connect our trail network into the rest of the trails that are present in the county and the rest of the parks that we have in town. Which of course, this wasn't an easy task, when you look at map DeSoto, DeSoto is pretty spread out. So there was a lot of consideration in how to best connect as many neighborhoods, as much of the population as possible so that we could have trails that really serve as broad of our citizens as we could. At this point, you know, I think what we have a plan and what Brandon will, you know, walk us through is a specific plan that we're proposing that will attempt to connect as many neighborhoods in our town to our current parks and recreation opportunities that we have locally, focusing on trails. We also tried to reduce the overall cost, the previous bond was at 3.25 million, and I think we're coming in right now with estimates somewhere around 2 million. So trying to reduce the overall cost of the bond as well to try to kind of meet some of the concerns that came back from the survey. So Brandon and Bill is here with me tonight, too, and I'll stay here after Brandon's done presenting. And if there's any other questions about process or how we came to these decisions and this proposal, we'd certainly like to hear from you and take that back.
All right, thank you, Josh.
All right, next slide. The 2022 bond referendum is focused on trails that link residents to city parks and amenities and other key locations in the community, including schools and creating a path for residents to travel on foot or on bike throughout the core of the city. The recommendation for the 2020 bond proposals were to simplify the proposal and reduce the price tag. The 2022 proposal includes four trails, its total price tag is less than two-thirds of the 2020 bond referendum. And it focuses on key intersections and paths identified in the post-election survey, including linking underserved area, oh, excuse me, linking underserved areas of the community. Next slide. Here's a map of the trails with a connection to existing city trails and sidewalks, along with a few existing, along with a few additional trails that the park board looked at. And as you can see, the proposed trails are focused on connecting areas of town outside of the downtown core with existing community amenities, including parks and local schools. The next section will focus on each of the four trails, and I'll kind of pause for a second and let you guys get a feel for the map. First up is Kill Creek from 83rd to 95th Street. It's roughly 1.6 miles of trail. It runs north and south and connects the northeastern and southeastern portions of town. The trail will run along Kill Creek Road and connect to existing and important intersections in town, 83rd Street and 95th Street. Additionally, at 95th Street in Kill Creek, there is a large shoulder that is being used by cyclists. Next slide. Second is 87th Street and Sunflower Road. This trail is roughly 1.3 miles long. It runs from Sunflower Roads to Sunflower Road to approximately Timber Trails Drive and along 87th Street from Sunflower to 91st. Additionally, the trail connects Lexington Trails Middle School and Lexington Lake Park. Third is Sunflower Road to 103rd, which provides a north-south trail on the west side of town connecting Clearview City to North of K-10. It's approximately 1.5 miles long. And additionally, it will connect with the previously mentioned trail on Sunflower Road, making a continuous 2.7-mile trail from 103rd to 87th Street and connecting the southwestern population center of DeSoto to the middle and high school. Next slide. Next up is 83rd and Laramie to Corliss is approximately 0.7 miles long. It provides a trail linking the northeastern portions of town to existing sidewalks and new developments around 83rd Street. This is just a summary and cost estimates of the project totaling approximately $2.1 million. You'll also see the construction material we're using on each one of the, of the proposed trails. Next slide. So next step, the first, first commerce, the first point is that today is an introduction of the topic. After this next slide, we'll open it up to general discussion and seek input from council on how they'd like to proceed. And if there are revisions, we'll go back and we'll come back in January with a revised proposal and updated financial estimates. And this final slide is just a proposed election timeline. This slide would basically lay out just a general summary of what an election would look like in 2022. We would still need to coordinate with the elections office, it could slide forward or back depending on the council's decisions that they make in the next couple of weeks. But with that, I have Jay and I have Josh and Bill up here to answer any other questions, and I'm happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, discussion from council questions, thoughts, anybody want, Kevin, are you ready to share a little bit?
Well, I got a question, so on the part on Sunflower Road, that also dovetails with our infrastructure plan. So the section for the road, or the road section would include a trail, correct, Mike?
Yeah.
So I guess it depends on, how would those dovetail together in terms of the anticipation for the road construction versus trail probably going in ahead of time?
Yeah.
And how, and wouldn't the funding of the improvements of Sunflower probably be driven in part by an economic development pursuit?
They could, so Sunflower Road would be one of those that would follow the initial, you know, if some of these economic development pursuits pan out, you know, the, the first roads that we're going to be improving with that would be Lexington Avenue and Edgerton Road, Sunflower would, would like that. So I think it's likely if this, if we decide to issue the referendum and if it passes, it's likely that this trail will be there before Sunflower Road gets upgraded significantly. What we have working to our advantage is the ability to use the utility corridor to place this path in and not necessarily have to place it within, otherwise what would normally be a road.
Okay, and that's, that was going to be part of my next question then was, I would have anticipated that the trail would come first, and so, right, what's the right-of-way plan? I hadn't.
Yeah, the plan would be use that.
Use the utility corridor.
Yep.
Because otherwise, I think, you know, the service that that provides to Clearview City is worth having it included prior to when we would otherwise anticipate the road that's in the infrastructure plan, which may not occur for a while. Yeah, that's what I, thank you.
Good. Lori?
Yeah, my questions really were kind of centered around the type of trail and where along these paths it was located. You know, the 83rd one costing a lot more than any of the others and the reason for the concrete rather than asphalt and just how you came up with those type of processes on that.
Well, they're thick lines right now, which means, you know, at this scale, it's, it's, I think we have a pretty good idea which side of the road these are going on. But they're thick lines for a reason, is because, you know, when we start to do the preliminary sort of analysis on this, we could, they could change, you know? And so likewise, the cost estimates are preliminary at this time, too. The reason, and honestly, for the material type, it kind of goes back to the original discussions that started in 2018 about the first referendum and about the whole trail plan for the whole city. I think those could change, too. I mean, I don't know that the park board necessarily had a concentration on, you know, this should be concrete, this could be asphalt. I think generally, they, they back to 2018 when it was more of a, it was more of a land use pattern sort of a discussion than an actual engineering discussion. So that's kind of a long way to say that those materials sort of decisions could change as well. The 83rd Street project from Laramie to Corliss is expensive because it's a difficult route. There's no room in the current right-of-way, the side slopes are steep, we anticipate bridge, potential bridge crossings at low, cross, and things like that are included in that that aren't really in the others because they're just, it's a tougher build in that stretch.
So would doing, has it, was it thought about of possibly doing like 89th instead of 83rd as a connection out to Corliss and then those, or, I mean?
Yeah, you know, that.
89, yeah, where that's at.
Well, I mean, it'd be the only other one.
Into that, the low end, what is that, 82nd?
Oh, yeah, the, be going north along the River Road then.
Oh, yeah, I see what you're saying.
Thought about taking it that route, but then we thought.
Josh, if you could.
Online, can't hear you. Trying to avoid being on mic.
Trying to avoid being on mic.
You got that? I got.
All right. Yeah, we, we had looked and discussed kind of going on 82nd. I don't know if we ever really kind of maybe way early in 2018 thought about coming up into those neighborhoods, but from the, I guess from the input from one of the, one of the members that kind of lived in the area thought that, you know, the, the volume of traffic on them are so light that they walk the, walk the road. Anyways, so what we were trying to do is connect that initial where we're ending right now into that broader Corliss area at the, you know, with the board recommendation, a board member noticing there's, you know, kids utilizing and coming off that road felt it was dangerous. We wanted to find a way to have a pedestrian pathway there. And we kind of thought if we wound down, that the likelihood of people using that versus just making the straight line, we might lose pedestrian traffic.
That goes to, it's called route continuity. Yeah. And so we've already kind of established, we started that route from downtown essentially along 83rd and, and then suddenly diverge them off. We, I, I think it's, I think it, from my perspective, I think it would be important to try and continue that route if we could.
Well, yeah, and at some point, hopefully in the future, then continuing it all the way to Gardner Road where it can connect down to the, to the trail, the boat ramp there. And I'm going to guess we haven't done this yet, but any discussion with the county as far as like Sunflower Road being, and their access from their other trails hooking to their, the trails that they have connecting their two parks, their trail to the other parks, so that that might help us out in some way on it.
Yeah, we haven't, you mean financially?
Financially as far as, or if they have a future plan for rail connecting over, that would benefit.
Yeah, I haven't had the financial discussions and there aren't any, we're not proposing any corridors that Johnson County has on their radar screens that I'm aware of.
That's all I have right now.
Thanks, Lori. Rob? If you're Mike, you would. All right. Danny?
Yes, sir.
Comment?
No, I'm okay. Thanks, man.
Kevin Ritter?
Uh, I believe the other two council, council folks have asked the questions that I would have asked, so I'm, I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
I would say I didn't sit on the body the whole time, but I was involved when a lot of this discussion was going on. But, you know, the, I understand the focus on trails. I think, I think we heard that message and we probably heard that as well, maybe or got that sense from the, well. The, the Kill Creek Trail, I think, the Kill Creek Trail, the 83rd Street Trail and material choices, I don't, I think, I think anything that's like built parallel or along a road probably is going to be more easily served as, as a concrete infrastructure. When we're, if we're able to offset like on Sunflower Road on that fully corridor and do an independent where we're away, I think, you know, a small paver can get in there and service that probably pretty easily. Maintaining that and so an alternate material on some, where, where you're able to gain some separation from the road, an alternate material. I think if we're in that roadway corridor, probably it's going to maybe needs to function more like a sidewalk. And I think we would have better results, performance, useful life if we went with the concrete product, probably, you know, when we're either right away like that.
What about the blue area then along? Is that not where there's a road now that's going to be concrete?
What do you?
Yeah, number 25.
25 that runs east west?
Yes.
So that one actually was part of the benefit district that Merck was throwing together that
Yeah.
They bid, they haven't brought to any results to you yet, have they, Mike?
No, haven't seen them.
It was bid as a concrete trail from Timber Trails to the corner there to Sunflower Road along 87th Street.
Right.
And that it's, it's, it's more, but it really is more offset, but it is a, it is concrete.
Okay.
That has maybe 25 foot on each side of the road, between the road and the fence. And so the trails generally offset on the far side of a ditch from the road.
And what's the idea for Kill Creek then? On the road, off the road?
Engineering discussion. I don't know. I've designed it a hundred times driving up and down.
Is it on, I mean, which side is?
You know, in terms of what the mayor described, it would be one of those that would be adjacent to the road, probably should be concrete. It would probably.
I guess, I guess that's kind of, you know, and we're looking at them and, you know, these figures, I don't know where they came from, but I mean, on that one chart, it shows, says asphalt and concrete and so, but now it sounds like that's not really the way they are. So then it makes me, oh, close we are with these dollars. And when we go, are we going to have closer dollars before you put a referendum together?
We'll certainly need to refine them. Yeah.
Okay. Okay.
Probably just take the materials out of the.
Yeah, well, it would affect the cost though.
Yeah.
To a degree.
Yeah.
Um, I, I think tonight from a policy perspective, and we've, we've heard, you know, this group discuss it before and, and express support for wanting to move forward with another referendum. So that's thing number one, let's reaffirm that if we're moving forward. And, you know, if, if we want to talk about corridors and alignments and things in, in, in the context of the park board's recommendation, if we need to send them that back to them and reconsider some of these things that we're talking about now, very appropriate to do that. We can take that back in that form and rework, you know, the, the estimate numbers. And we could also integrate the concept of project 25 potentially being brought into reality by a benefit district that's separate and a portion of that, the 87th Street part. We have an opportunity to include that with the benefit district with the city at large portion to fund that, to fund that part. So that's not really been worked in, hadn't really been discussed with the plant, with the park board yet because Merck had just, you know, we're just developing those, that plan over the fall. So you'll be seeing a benefit district application likely in January that, that kind of spells that out more specifically.
So I guess to the first question then, what is our appetite for a bond issue? I mean, it's a fairly aggressive schedule that's laid out there.
Yeah.
Come to a vote in April, I think it was.
Yeah, it'd be April and May.
So I don't know, just a general poll of the body. What, what do you, what do we think?
I support the issue and I wasn't trying to be difficult. I was just trying to get my vision on what we were doing. I don't want to, I don't want to come up with it and all of a sudden it's time for it and it's now two and a half or two and three quarters a million dollars.
Right.
Because, okay, we're changing what we're doing and now, you know, and so then we're only, you know, and I just want to make sure that, you know, what we're presenting and seeking, we're, we're getting the most for. And my biggest support would be the Kill Creek and the ones not 83rd, not the 83rd one, but the Kill Creek and the one out by the park would be my number one support as far as making sure they get done. Not that I'm against the 83rd one. I just think that there's
Terms of prioritization.
Priorities, that would be my less one, just because I think it's a pretty difficult and probably the less, I don't know. It's just got a lot of issues with it that go with that one. So
Challenges.
It has its challenges that we've talked about for various other reasons in the past. So that's all I have, but I do support it and I'll go with whatever.
I get what you're saying. We don't, we don't want to present something and then not be able to deliver it, right? I mean.
Yeah, that's, I just was trying to get more information on exactly how it was looking and what to envision and what we're getting out of it. And, you know, and I, the section 25 I thought was going to be a part of that benefit district. And now though, that means we still have to pay for it and come up with it, but it was just kind of trying to figure all that out. So that's all I have. Okay. Thank you.
Rob?
A couple of things. What I was pulling up, which is why I said come back to me, was the Johns County Parks and Rec Trail Guide. Kind of coming back to what you were asking about them tying in their parks. Right now, according to their trail guide, Kill Creek Streamway and Lexington Lake are tied together. And that's using 91st Street and Lexington Avenue to get over to Commerce where you pick it up at Rarick. So they've already listed Lexington Lake to Kill Creek Streamway is pretty much connected. As far as I know, when I had Jay check on it, Kill Creek Streamway to Kill Creek Park is their next connection, which would be engineered 2022, 2023, with a possible build in 2026. So that's probably their next in our area, which would be a good connection. Because then, as we start looking at Sunflower Road for Clearview City up to 91st, that would give them access to Lexington Lake to Kill Creek Streamway, possibly all the way down to Park by 2026. So that's a good thing. Another question I have, which is unrelated to the paths, because I've seen and I, now that I'm the liaison to the park board, where he left off, I picked up. And so I've seen a lot of the map. I've heard a lot of the discussion. One of the questions I would have would be timing of the bond referendum. It's a pretty aggressive schedule, but at the same time, we're also looking at some possibly aggressive inflation. So my question would be simply how much and when would be the timelines to where if we said, okay, wait, the inflationary rates beyond probably where we want to try and put forward this, can we push it back to late 2022 or early? And I'm not saying I want to or need to. I'm just saying under current conditions, what's the ability to deadlines as far as when we move on this as a council?
Yeah, I, I think the, the point of the timeline was just to kind of get you a feel of what, what the timeline from when you would start to when it would end. We could move that up or forward kind of at council's discretion of when they wanted to be.
Well, there's, there's an opportunity in the fall to be in with the general election and have it on the ballot for a general election. The mail-in thing I thought, I thought was tied to other mail-in initiatives, other mail ballot initiatives that might happen in the county.
It could. Yes, it could. Yeah.
So in that way, the county wants us to couple those so they don't have competing issues at once. And I think that isn't that the April deadline there if we want to, if we want to mail that?
Yeah, I've heard. So how, how this works is essentially Johnson County, the election office doesn't want to have overlapping elections in jurisdictions that overlap. So for example, if the school district was doing a bond referendum, they wouldn't want DeSoto to.
Mail in.
Mail in, yes. And so they, they wouldn't, they wouldn't want those overlapping. They also would prefer that if we did a bond referendum, it within a win, a month window, we do it at the same time as another jurisdiction, just so that we wouldn't have, they wouldn't have two different vote counts and campuses to do at the same time. So it would take some coordinating with the elections office, which is why that timeline is fluid to see when other municipalities would be doing an election, a mail-in ballot election. But yes, we could do it in the, if we wanted to do.
The fall general.
Yeah, in the fall general, or we, we could do it in the primary as well.
Or the August primary. Could be, it could be on a regular ballot in the August primary or the fall general.
And the discussion of the park board was to try and shy away from being, having it tied to a general election, thinking more participation with the mail-in.
Yeah, Bill.
Yeah, you're savvy with some of that.
We talked about.
You gotta come to the mic, Bill. Please come up to the mic.
Bill Miller, 9509, close court. We, we spoke as a, actually discussed at length strategies behind whether, whether we, we would recommend that this be part of a general election or not. And I'll probably slip into my own angle on this, but my angle was we all want it to be successful. And we feel like we've worked as, as a body for the last three years to try to parse out what it is that the public really wants, you know, with their tax dollars, especially as it pays the parks. And so this is what it is and we, and we believe in it. So we fear that if, if, if it's, if it's presented on the ballot as a general, as part of a general election, then it runs the risk of getting tied to something totally unrelated to trails and parks, like masks or vaccines that have nothing to do with trails. But if one side says we work for this issue and this issue, then it obfuscates the real issue that we're trying. So that's where at least my, from my side on the board, I think we had general, some general consensus that we prefer the mail-in ballot as a single wish, as a single wish.
Kind of seems to take politics out of it a little bit and just put city needs in place.
Politics. It's just trails and not other politics.
I might jump in if there's a little dead air. I, I like the focus. I like that it's a trails package. I think there's some real merit to, to that. I would, I would be aggressive with the schedule with opportunities out there for infrastructure funding. I think any place that we can get design underway and have design ready, then we can be positioned to go pursue transportation dollars or alternative transportation dollars if those opportunities arise. And if we're not ready, then somebody else gets in line in front of us. And, and so wherever we can get design work done, I think is going to be advantageous to the concern of inflation or, you know, do these projects just escalate and can we deliver? You know, one, one advantage we have is we don't have to do them all at once. And so particularly when, you know, the group of trails, the cluster of trails that really is in the core of town is where there's the most populous that's going to be served. And so it may make sense that way. Certainly the partnership with Merk is, is awesome. But then as we get out there to Sunflower, you know, we can gauge that a little bit on other construction funding or opportunities that may also arise around the road where we can throw the trail into it kind of thing. But I think a little bit of phasing and timing can help us be able to deliver relative to what we see in the budget situation. So I'd be aggressive with schedule primarily so we can get design done.
Okay. Kevin Ritter, your thoughts on?
Well, I, I totally agree with Kevin on the aggressiveness of the, the schedule so that we're ready to do that, just as we were with, with the infrastructure project. So, but one thing I had for, I guess, Mike or, or anybody was, was any of this considered like the paving portions, the asphalt portions was, was our crews considered to do any of those in the cost estimates?
No.
Okay.
No, not at all.
Just wanted to make sure. Thank you. No, I, I support it.
All right.
Either way.
Thank you, Kevin. Danny?
Yes, sir. Yeah, I feel the same way. I want to keep the schedule with aggressiveness and like to see that. And also can, you know, Mike, can we get some help from you on the cost estimate of what we can do to help this situation out as far as materials and guiding to help that? And maybe, you know, do we want to go that way?
Well, certainly I'll be engaged if we, as we refine our estimates or we finalize on language about any sort of referendum, I'll be engaged.
Yeah, can, can we also be open about, you know, when we come up with these materials and design, they're going to be mentioned, I hope, that what the, you know, so that people aren't going to have to be worrying, well, this thing's going to be mulch or is this going to be concrete?
Yeah, there's a line to walk there about how specific you get with referendum language and how general you want to kind of be there. There's, there's back and forth to consider there, Danny. I think the, the important part is that we don't underestimate, grossly underestimate costs here and not be able to deliver after voters potentially vote yes on something and expect.
I understand. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mayor.
All right. Thank you, Danny. So did you get a, did you, I think you stated your support, so I didn't, all right. All right. So I think, so we, to the first question, yes.
Yeah. Got that.
What was your second question?
I can't remember. Well, I think it did have to do with timing, but.
So I think the timing, I think, I think we're, I, I agree that a single issue vote, I mean, that's the best way to measure our local, our community support for it. I mean, I, I think, I was a little disappointed with the turnout in the last mail-in. I think it was, I was expecting something closer to 50, but I think it.
but I think it kind of got lost in the pandemic craziness, you know, and it's just unfortunate timing. So I, I really.
Yeah, we'll go back to the park board with your recommendations and suggestions in January, and we'll come back to you probably in February with a revised proposal.
And I think, I think maybe it's probably time to engage consulting, engineer consulting work to do some preliminary alignment study on these routes. If we're all okay with these routes, then let's just sharpen the pencil a little bit on that. And that probably involves bringing someone in. Put this together. I'm about out of capacity here with my time, so.
Well, that's what I was going to say, you know, we've always been of support of having somebody to help you in the areas that you need engineering wise. And if this is a.
Well, and yeah, you'll notice Brandon gave the report tonight. So it's been him, you know.
So Brandon, if you want to find an engineer to help you, we, we will support you, I think, along that way, so.
I, I think while we're on parks and we got these two guys here. I do have two appointments to the park board that I'm ready to, to bring forward. So I'm gonna, I would like to ask for your approval to appoint Kerry Johnson to the unexpired term of Priscilla Franks. And Noel Binion to the unexpired term of Teresa Kellner. So.
You need, you need an action.
Someone would make a motion to approve my appointments as presented. I can't make my own motion.
No, that was my motion, but my mic wasn't on. I make a motion. We approve appointments to the park board.
Second. All right. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Out of Michael.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Only one question on that. How many spots remain vacant after that?
One, Bill is asked to be relieved of his duties, and so I am looking for someone to fill Bill's shoes.
So we have a full board until he leaves, which is pretty much.
Thank you. Appreciate, I, he's already stuck longer than I asked him. I told him, I said, give me until, give me until October.
How many members are on it? How many members are there?
Seven members of the body.
So right now we have seven, and then Bill's going to roll.
Right, that's right. So January, if, if Bill sticks.
In October to be returned.
Yeah, right.
Who are the other three that are on it right now?
Jim, Joe Scher, Mary Jo Klein, myself, and Ryan Johnson.
Yep.
Oh, good.
Hey, may I ask?
Yes, Danny.
Mayor, excuse me, can I ask if we get a, a list of the park board and the, and the head of the park board, their numbers, and see if we can get that out to the council? So everybody can.
Yeah. Get an updated roster for the body? Thank you.
With the, with the terms associated with that, too.
Thank you, sir. Bye.
Mayor, we also have, I think we have a long meeting session set for the 30th.
Good. 30th January, week before your, more or less for the meeting.
No, the night of. Yeah, like 30 minutes.
Prior. All right. Well, thank you both for your hard work. I appreciate it. We all.
We all.
And now you can stick, or you can go on, and whatever you choose to do.
I don't know.
All right. Our next item is to consider Resolution 1064, establishing city boundary.
Yes, Council, this is an item that by statutes, any year in which we annex property, we have to declare the city boundary, and that boundary has to be distributed to the election office, both counties, the registered deeds, and the KDOT engineer. So obviously, we have annexed some ground this year, so Resolution 1064. Mike prepared the, you know, amended the boundary to match up with what's what's in the city currently. So by adopting resolution, you're approving that that is the official boundary of, of the city of DeSoto.
Okay. Any questions from council?
Is it right?
I did not verify the description. So it includes all annexations for the past year?
Yeah, for, for, it just essentially reestablishes the entire boundary description. We have a very qualified council member that could double check the legal description in the room, actually. I do intend to engage a, a surveyor to reestablish, because on all these boundary annexate, or boundary ordinance, if you look at, we just tag on the added bottom. It's become a little unruly. So it is consistent with every ordinance that we've passed since 2000, at least. And, and I have at least, from a layman's person, retraced the boundary itself. So to that degree, yes, it is, it is correct. But I do intend next year to have a, have a surveyor reestablish a meets and bounds boundary. So we can start fresh with a new one next year.
Mike, just curious, can you just describe the two island pieces?
Yeah, so the, the one up north is Whittle Big Knife Park. So that's heated. And then the one down south is Wilderness, Wilderness Park.
South of 127.
It is, but it was before the.
Before the agreement was struck. So we already have a precedent for properties. I'm not going there.
Is the latest one on 90?
95th Street?
Fifth on there? Or am I?
Yeah.
Missing that?
It should be about where your cursor was. That's one of the reasons.
Which is the one we're talking about to be rezoned, right?
Right.
Right. I don't see that on there.
Not shaded. Is it in, in the legal description?
You know, I, I may have missed it. Is this something we can?
Hence my question, is it right?
Yeah.
Yeah, since this is a resolution, you can.
And that was the question, did we get everything that was?
Yeah, I apologize.
Because we did some others on the other side of 95th also, but I think, didn't we? On the other side of.
Yeah, we did.
Off the chorus, those look like.
On the other side of Waverly.
They're on it, but that latest one is.
We did one, yeah, one out to the east on 95th and one to the.
Yeah, it, it appears that I did miss.
It'd be that one that the cursor's on, right?
This one, yeah, that's the parcel.
Yeah.
I apologize for that.
Make your motion approved with confirmation that everything's correct.
Triple confirmation.
Double check those south of 95th between Waverly and Close Court. You know, those piano keys that are bright, bright, one of those three, are those?
Are those?
No, those aren't. But that one right there was just.
Is that the one that was?
That was just added.
Yeah. Yeah. I believe this one's pretty recent. I'm not sure it was this year.
Actually.
One was Mark Gully.
Actually, there might be another one, because there was one right next to it that we added also. I think we added the one next to Mark Gully's property. That one that's there is Mark Gully's property that we, he divided into two.
Right.
But then we didn't, we added, didn't he purchase, or didn't we add another one right next to that?
I don't recall annexing another one there.
Oh, I thought we did.
All right. But this has to be done this year, right?
Yeah.
We have to do the deed. So the motion would be to approve, approve Resolution 1064 pending staff verification of annexation. Recently annexed parcels. So I'll make the motion that we approve Resolution 1064, establishing city boundaries pending staff verification of recently annexed properties.
I'll second the motion.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Out of Michael.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Murdock.
Yes.
I think I got everyone that time. Motion carries.
All right. Item C, consider ordinance 2523, rezoning property at 32235 West 95th Street.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. As we're seeing out this year, missing track in the legal description. We're now in the process of asking for rezoning to a Soto category. County's designation of rural agriculture. The applicant, Chris Patrick Pearson, asked for residential suburban, which does fit this area quite well. Residential suburbs, large lot subdivision tracks that are not connected to the public sanitary sewer system. This has the least criteria for that. Went through the process with Pearson, walking through it. They did agree voluntary, voluntary annex. A couple months ago. Karen recently planned a commission meeting. There really was no particular concerns on this track. Character suitability, post zoning. Land use is all consistent. It's been happening in the area. It's all large, large tract residential in this area. Subject property, won't create additional burden, utilities, or infrastructure. I'm not going to change anything. We're already following snow on 95th Street. Now, it's got the sheriff, our department. Consolidated, all service area, so there will be no change in services there. Won't be any significant impact on the environment. Granted its resulting request. The only thing that came up as a red flag was during the, actually prior to public hearing, I was contacted by property owners. Owners of the property operating the business out there. Talked to the applicant about this and agreed to move their trucking actions, concrete, unmade business. And they have four or five employees, trucks, and in no way, shape, or form, this is allowed in this district, and they agreed to reduce that amount of vehicles, not have non-resident employees working at the track on site. In the process of purchasing a property, DeSoto, they moved their business. I did give them, I told them they've got 30 days, the date that it gets rezoned, they've got to comply or accommodate action for our code enforcement. They agreed. Quite rare of that. Did have, did have a couple neighbors, East Johnson County. And then maybe David in the South, both called me and talking about the business that's on site. Looking through these issues with the applicant, but they agreed. Trucking business, the concrete foundation business, the trucks. How someone's not based on this location. We'll be monitoring that. Based to comply from the day that these are going to be in effect. With that, there weren't any comments at the meeting on the residence. We needed a few people that attended those surrounding residences. Public hearing. With that, I was going to bring questions over. Planning commission did, by the way, approve the rezoning.
Questions for Brad?
So what is exactly like the, the rules on if you ran a business? Does it have to do with how many employees are working outside of it? Because I mean, people could do this on his own if it was just one employee in his.
And that was kind of the conclusion. He's going to keep one truck, is, as a non-resident. One non-resident employee himself. So he had about four or five. People were coming, not them. They were just going out for the day and coming back. Back and forth all. That's the rules. Sole proprietorship at your place and one employee that is a non-resident.
So out of curiosity, does R U R allow for that type of business?
Well, we don't, we do have some specific items that we do prohibit and allow, but it's not a very detailed list. This is kind of one of those ones that falls. It's not prohibitive, but it's not allowed either. So we just fell back to, it's a sole proprietorship with one non-resident.
But if it had remained R U R, then they could keep doing what they were doing?
No, actually, that was part of the reason that they got into a little bit of a hassle with the county. That was part of their why to be in DeSoto. There was a slight out with the county. They could have complied with the condition of use permit, but size of their accessory building was a little bit larger than the county should improve, and so it got into a big hustle. So the county, it's a problem with the city, so they didn't have to be. But they've been actually pretty good to work with. Very clear that, I mean, there's no room for error. They have to get the trucks out there. And we've had this issue before in some other locations down. Once we really are moving and everybody is compliant, so once the code enforcement action started, I don't see that. We're going to go down that road with these folks, but we do have that hammer. They're well, they're well aware of it.
Okay. Any questions?
I guess you need a motion, then?
Yep, we're ready for a motion.
I'll make a motion. We approve ordinance 2523 at 32235 West 95th Street. Zoning District, R U R, Road District to City of DeSoto, R O Residential Suburban District.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Out of Michael.
Yes.
Mayor Walker?
Yes.
Murdock?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item D, consider architectural selection for restroom addition at Miller Park.
All right. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Something that Jay Garv and I have been working on. Part of 2022 budget, there's some additional funding approved by the council to add some handicap testable restrooms at Miller Park. With that, Jay and I went through and analyzed parameters on what would be more appropriate as far as expanding the building and also making some renovations, concession stand, concession building there as well. Once we kind of had a basic layout, we contacted three firms. Two of which we've worked with, Ford Zemersche Architecture, Door Distribution Building. Yes, to know Walker did our work out front here to see all the security system. And then also really wanted to get three firms, and I had to fill them up. Quite ways back and contacted him as well. Asked them to submit proposals. Yes, to know Walker declined to submit, so they were moved. Every project like this, they just didn't have room with their existing staff. They could proceed. They give proposals from RLS associates, Zemersche Architecture. Jay and I voted proposals. We're recommending RLS associates mostly because they, with a little more effort upfront, they actually met with Jay and I at the site. Came up with a layout and. They actually met with Jay and I at the site, came up with a layout and seemed to work pretty well for us. So. And then also I think some partnership from the mayor, Ray Village, and former UCC Commissioner knows how these governments work. Times delays, processes that we all have to go through. Of the transparency process. And I know Jay Zimrishe as well. Being the city, so it won't hold a lot of pressure to see Lawrence, Paulson City as well. But I felt like Ron, you know, a little bit more effort with all engaged city staff a little bit. So maybe I can proceed with Ron Shaefer to do scope and fee. We estimate it's going to be around $25,000. There will be survey work. Time and sanitary sewer system. Find those lines to the old part of Soto. That stamp isn't quite true, but some of those lines are. That doesn't help. Nobody knows what they are. We're going to have to spend some survey time verifying those locations inside. So the $25,000 is going to include some survey work and some survey work as well. And there'll be some sidewalk, some flat concrete work.
Okay. Questions for Brad?
I've worked with Ron before. He's a really a nice guy, so I like him. Yes.
Well, motion or questions?
No questions. I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
We I recommend go with the recommended approval and select RLS associates, associates to negotiate a fee and proposal with him.
Now I'll second that.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item E, consider agreement for law enforcement services with the Johnson County Sheriff for 2022.
Yes, Council. I'll introduce this, our annual contract agreement with the sheriff's office this year. It's down just, just slightly from last year, down about $2,000. The scope of the, of the services is identical to years past with one exception. We did extend the area service description down to 147th Street in response to our latest annexation action that we took in November. So the 2022 budget has $556,000 in that. Was an estimate of what we thought the, the contract was going to be. It's also a $4,000 allowance for overtime in the budget. So with the total cost of agreements, 543,304. We have the budget to cover that and I recommend that council authorized the mayor to sign the agreement.
Okay. Questions from council?
So this does include the expanded territory then?
Yeah. Yeah.
Is there a possible future for seeing increase of additional car or additional expenses as we move forward?
Possibility. The, the calculation used to establish the annual service contract is largely based on call load. So if we're good and, and the sheriff doesn't have a lot of activity in the area, then it, then it goes down. That's why it's down slightly. It was up slightly last year. And so call load out there is, is zero, you know? Couple trespassing calls over the years. So until we start having development and that spurs call load, then I don't expect massive increases.
Okay. Any other questions? Someone want to make a motion?
I was going to, again, I'll make the motion. We approve the sheriff's contract.
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second to approve the contract with sheriff for 2022. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Murda.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Two, two quick comments.
Sure.
Mayor. One, always happy to approve the sheriff's contract after having attended many, many league events and talked to many other cities. There's absolutely no way we could fund and do and have the level and quality of service that we get by having our own department. I know that comes up as a question sometimes. But having it, talked to a lot of other council members from other cities. That what it does for us is phenomenal. Second, the council did not get a chance to meet our last DeSoto deputy. The deputy currently assigned to DeSoto is here and looks like, I don't know if this is official, unofficial, but at least it looks like he's here for a little while, which I wholly approve of. So if he wanted to introduce himself, he can do that real quick.
Would you like to take us just a moment to introduce yourself?
Sure, that'd be great.
It's a hassle.
That way the folks at home can see and hear you.
My name is Joe Rindell. I've worked with sheriff's office for about five years now and I've been basically a lifelong resident of Johnson County. Grew up actually playing against DeSoto in high school and everything, but I've been super happy with the city and just love getting to meet everyone around you and love talking to you guys at the meetings. And I'm very excited to see what the future holds for us and hope I can keep, keep going on in the spot.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We will move on. Item F, consider 2021 budget amendment for the water fund.
Yes, Council. This is the action item on the budget amendment. I did in your staff report provide you actually what will be very close to year end figures, projections still technically, but we still have December to go. On the general fund, water funds and sewer funds all are, are, are very healthy. Just in terms of, and just for a reminder, all of those funds are significantly above, year end balances are significantly above the, the percentage ratio that we lay out in our, in our financing policy of around 30% of operating expenses is where we like to be, those, those year end fund balances like to be. The general fund actually ended 2021 at right around 70%. We project 2022 to be down close to 55. This is by design. And moderating toward that target of somewhere around 30%. Similar story with the, the water fund budget and the sewer fund as well. I'll stop there. What, what is up for action is this amended certificate for fiscal year 2021 and the budgeted water fund expenses from 2.0 to 2.27 million. So if we could have a motion approving that, it would be one of my recommended.
Okay.
Do that.
Any, any questions or someone ready to make that motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion. We approve the amended certificate for the fiscal.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Murda.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Oh, right. Considering or continuing in the water vein, consider purchase of pump control at water plant.
Yes, Council. At the water plant, there are two 100 horsepower high service pumps that pump the water, treated water out of the clear well that sits below the building, out into the system, essentially into the water tower. They operate on a rotating basis. There are electronic controls that control them, mostly needed to ramp them up and down to avoid water hammer in the system. They're pretty pricey controls. Just buying them is $5,000, $6,000. One of them is going out. It's still operational, but sometimes, sometimes it doesn't operate the way it should, and so we need to replace it. We have one estimate for purchase and installation of that at $9,400. That exceeds my budget authority. So what I'm asking tonight is your, your, your authority to proceed with that purchase on the condition that we get at least two more written proposals for that work because our purchasing policy requires that. I'm asking for an authorization of up to $9,500.
Okay. Questions or discussion or motion?
Mike, do you need it?
Mike.
Go ahead, Danny.
Go ahead, Danny.
Thank you. Did you say you were going to get some more proposals for the, for the switch or the controls?
Yeah, Danny, our, our purchasing policy requires three written proposals, anything over $5,000.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just, it cut out on me, so I didn't hear all of it. Thank you.
Mayor, my question to Mike was, does he need any contingency money on top of that or is 95 good?
I, I think 9,500 is good. We have one solid proposal for, for, for that and it's not, there aren't many unknowns. It's really just a swap out of existing components. I don't think I need it. Thank you.
I'm good, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right. I make a motion. We authorize the city administrator to proceed with the replacement of the pump control at the water treatment plant in an amount not to exceed $9,500 on the condition that at least three written proposals are received and evaluated.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Hunter Michael.
Yes.
Murda.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Item five, executive session. We do not have anything, so we will go to advisory report. City administrator.
Two things this evening, Council, and then I'll stand for questions. The, the storm last night did cause some, some damage. Debris in the roadway has had trees down. The street department and fire department worked to clear those. They spent today, today cutting them up and removing them. We know there's going to be residents who have tree damage and we've already had some questions about that. So we will, and I already have announced that we're going to have the brush dump open this Saturday from 10 to 2 for residents who, who need to, to use that over the weekend. So also want to report, we didn't have, to my knowledge, yet any, any damage, certainly not any extensive damage to any city facilities. So no trees through roofs of city property, no truck damage, none of that. So got off pretty easy. No, not everybody was so lucky. So that was thing number one. Thing number two tomorrow is the employee Christmas lunch. And if you aren't convinced yet that you need to come, the mayor is catering the barbecue. So that'll convince you. I do, last year, we provided employee bonuses at, at that launch and I have a request that council allow me to do that again, $100 for each employee. Thirty, is it 33 or 34, Brandon?
33.
33. So I'd ask authorization of council to allow me to provide Christmas bonuses to each employee, equal amount, $100 each, total of $3,300.
Okay.
So moved.
Thank you.
We have a motion, a second. All, we'll do a roll call. It's money.
Lane.
Yes.
Daniels.
Yes.
Hunter Mike.
Yes.
Ritter.
Yes.
Murda.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thanks.
Thank you. That's very much appreciated. That was it.
All right. City attorney. All right. City planner.
One thing I might add, Mayor, we did finally get the water distribution building. The front has been stored up and the rock has been completed, so that project we can shut off for a little bit.
All right.
Been a while. Contract is kind of busy.
City clerk, were you done with that, Brad?
Yes. No report in there.
No reports. Council comments. Kevin Hahnemichael.
Yeah, I'll give a report as part of the Siri board meeting, the Johnson County Economic Research Institute. I'll keep it short. I know the chiefs are on. So I'm going to try to screen share. How about this for technology?
Yeah, it's here.
A little fun with charts and graphs. This is the Johnson County retail sales, total Johnson County retail sales. And the chart on the right is 2020 compared to 2021. The white line and dots are 2020. You see the black line and dots are 2021, which has been running significantly ahead of last year. Although you do see the big run up during COVID of retail sales when everybody was out spending money. But then there's this really odd, sharp drop in September. So be interesting to see how that plays out. And then if I, and then how that translates to DeSoto. You can see that DeSoto is chugging along, pretty consistent with last year, just nice, steady, even pace. Still on that, that, following that uphill trend. So you can see at the bottom, this year over last year, we're up about two and a half percent. It'll a little, almost 76 million in, in retail sales. So really good. Really good showing there with DeSoto's sales relative to Ken. So, and if I can figure out how it stops sharing now.
Maybe I need to do that.
Maybe you can kick me out. Let's see. If you can figure out how to kick me out of there, otherwise then I'll just bail off the meeting in a minute. The other thing I would, there you go. The other thing I'd comment on is part of the Siri meeting, they always have the economic development directors go around and give a, a report. And both Beth Johnson from Overland Park and Ann Smith Tate from Shawnee commented on our economic development activity. And so, and some collaborative efforts that they've had in, in support of some of our recent EDC pursuits. And that they also are acknowledging that, you know, DeSoto is operating on these KC ADC level pursuits now. So I also had breakfast with Greg Kendall from Wyandotte EDC this morning and he made a similar comment. The takeaway is that we're at the economic development table and the Johnson County EDC execs are all pretty collaborative. There's not a lot of territorialism, you know, you know, we're going after this project in competition with you. There's a lot of, a lot of collaboration and support for, you know, something, if something, if a job lands in Lenexa, it may be DeSoto workers that are, Wyandotte County, from my time on the board there, you know, their approach is they'll support any economic development project in the metropolitan areas because they want Wyandotte County people to get those jobs. So they're all, you know, they say, we got workforce and we got jobs. And that was Greg Kendall's comment to me is, you know, pursuits that we're looking at, you know, the workforce could, could come from there. So it also highlights that we've moved to a higher level than we've been in past years in terms of really dealing with the assessments and decisions that come along with some of these economic development pursuits that are, that are at these, at this top tier level. And, you know, we talk about Mike being busy and I think it only is going to highlight, you know, our future is that we're going to be dealing with more complex assessments, more complex incentive plans, maybe more sophisticated type of applicants. You know, so we'll, we'll be stepping up a league, but it's pretty interesting to hear that, that we're being recognized by the other cities.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Thank you, Kevin.
Lori.
Yeah, I have a couple of things, actually three things. The first one, this is more probably a Brad maybe question, maybe the first two kind of are. So I have noticed that 95th and Lexington, you know, that's a really hard turn to find at night. You know what I'm talking about? It's like, and I'm just wondering if, you know, we talk about streetlights a lot and this and that. Isn't an appropriate place for a light so you can see the intersection better? If not, is there a way to put some kind of reflective signage of something there so that when you're driving down Lexi, can you can actually see where the turn, then it doesn't turn square, you know? So you're kind of, so go in that direction. It's just, it's just a bad sighting area. And I just was wondering if that might be something we could look at and if there's, you know, maybe not a And if there's, you know, maybe not a street light, but some simple things that we could maybe do on a street like that to make it more visible when you're coming and trying to turn on to it off of Lexington onto 95. The second thing kind of was something that I thought of a lot because I drive down Commerce every day. And don't know that there's a solution for this either, but we talk about the sidewalks, and we talked about how, you know, Johnson County considers coming up the trail and down Commerce and over to 91st as a trail, but it's not continuous because there's little spots in there that there's no sidewalk. So you have to hop from one side across to the other, but there's not a sidewalk even across from it to go in between. And I understand that we don't put sidewalks in until development is there. But it just seems that if no develop, I don't know, it just seems like such a lag to wait for sidewalks on some of that. And I can't even remember if there's a, there's not even a sidewalk like in front of
Burt or Pizza Hut.
Pizza Hut.
No sidewalk.
You know, Pizza Hut and the bank and the gas station don't even have a sidewalk. So
Stuff didn't have sidewalks. I interrupted.
No, you're right. But that's exactly what I was gonna say. You know, there's sidewalks that aren't on there. And so I'd like us to kind of look at that, part of our future sidewalk plan. And as you go along over to Commerce, you know, there's, it's mainly over at the Good Sense areas where, you know, and then those lots that never, they're just in there. And I mean, I don't know when the last time we've had any interest in, if you go a little bit for, keep going.
Yeah.
But anyway, you know, there are a lot of people that do use that. They walk that, and that section right there is blank. And so you're walking in the road, and there's a lot of big semi trucks in that road, so it's not really a good place to be having people in the road. So
The families that moved into the apartments, connecting to the trail, connecting to Lexington.
Yeah. Yeah.
The schools.
Yeah. So I would like to suggest that even if we can't get the owners to do some sidewalk there, that we might consider again actually finding, or maybe the county, since they consider that their path from connecting, that we could get some help in connecting sidewalks that are
I think the connection they've mapped is the trail to
The trail to the trail.
And up to, so they don't go this way, it's the other way.
It's the other way where it would go 91st up to Lexington.
Yes.
By the vet.
Oh, all the way up there?
Yeah, they have to go that way and then the vet down.
Gotcha. Well, that makes sense, too.
But it was a tiny little section that
Okay, so we won't talk to the county, but if we could, as a city, maybe price out that section or talk to
But, yeah.
Our good friend, Mr. Bazone, and see if maybe he would, if he's the one that owns that, we could maybe figure something out for the benefit of our residents here.
Because I would agree, making that a higher priority and getting on that, whether it be through the people that are there or subsidizing it or doing something.
Yeah. And in front of those businesses, I don't know that we can go backwards, but is there some kind of benefit, something that we could do there?
Well, I mean, nothing else, we've got 60 grand a year in CIP as the sidewalk program. We've focused really toward the older part of town and, you know, that's
Yeah. I think once we got these connected, it would be great, though.
Yes, those three, and, and the Pizza Hut is obviously, you guys have both seen it, that's gonna be the challenge, right?
There's a big slope there.
Yeah.
But you've got the same gap on, little gaps on the other side of the street.
There's the challenge right there.
Yeah, you've got, I mean, we could go across and have a gap. I mean, if you want to go across the road, then there should be cross paths right there to go across, which is fine as long as we do that.
Yeah, I think you
You see what I'm saying? Okay.
I agree. What's your third?
So we could just work on that. My third one, Mayor, has to do with appointments made by the mayor. If we would happen to have someone that would, for some reason, leave council. The mayor appoints someone, but Patrick, I'm wondering if you can look into the possibility that that appointment would only be until the next elections and not continuous until the appointment person was the person that they're replacing. So that they're only, so that whoever's appointed, you know, they're not really an elected person. They're appointed, that it would only go to the next time the city has elections, instead of waiting until that whole appointment would be finished off.
So the first finishing term. So example, if Kevin or I stepped
If tomorrow you had to leave, somebody would be only on for
Not pointed till
Not four, not four years, but two years. Yes. And that's just a thought.
The Spring Hill probably had something to do with your question.
Yes.
The Spring Hill mayoral issue, so.
So if you could maybe look at that, unless somebody in the council opposes that, maybe we could look at, bring that back for a future. And that then will call it a good night.
All right. Rob?
Um. I don't have anything that needs to be before council at this point. I'm good.
Thanks. Danny?
Just Merry Christmas to council and staff, and you guys all have a Merry Christmas. That's all I got. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Kevin Ritter?
Two things. I apologize. I will not be able to make the lunch tomorrow. I'm traveling. That's why I couldn't be there tonight. And second, I do agree with Lori's first comment about the 95th and Lexington turn. And because it's become a, quite, quite a safety issue with, with the bridges being fixed, and we know that the other one's gonna be out as well. So I'd be in support of some sort of lighting there. That's all I have, Mayor.
All right. Not to be a contrarian, I probably have just driven it so many times. I don't, I don't have that same issue, so. But I, you know, my mother-in-law's, I've been, I've been driving that corner for 50 years, so.
And I understand that, and, and it's not, it's not even just, you know, an overhead light. It's just when you're going, it's like, when you're not used to where that turn is really. It, there's, it's really, it's, it's just like this big open street, and then when you're turning, you're kind of going this way, and it's just, I don't know, just street. I think about that, though, on 80, the bridge on 83rd, how, you know, on the right side, the new side, it has all the little reflectors on it, but on the old side, it doesn't have all those nice little reflectors. Kind of a, you know, so something similar to reflectors along the road, I think would be, because when you're driving that way and start to make the turn, then you see the reflect, I mean, your headlights are gonna see it. It's not during the day. It's just, you know, when so I think hopefully there'd be a simple solution.
There will be. Anything can be engineered.
But, you know, Rick's driven that road 1,000 times a year at least, so he knows right where the turn is.
I don't have anything, I don't think, that would add.
I will then make a motion. We adjourn. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Post? All right, we are adjourned.